We obviously regionally, we we are looking for solutions that help us work smarter collaboratively. And with coordinate solutions. Your perspective and your input, especially with small municipalities like Edgewood and Windermere. I found this to be incredibly resourceful and helpful because we have small city staff. There's a lot going on and we're learning a lot of resources. There's funding opportunities out there. We'll have speakers on. You know, different grants you can take advantage of that people aren't aware of. We also have valuable training, policy updates, legislative briefings. It's a great place to learn best practices and to also be able to. It's no charge. The league does not meet during the summer because of Florida League of Cities Annual Conference, but we host a regional breakfast during the conference. We occasionally hold nighttime network meetings. We also provide at no charge the four hour required ethics training that we all have to do every year. And it's the attendance is open to the elected officials as well as city staff. And we've rotated these around two things you'll see is that we have our next one is the. Holiday reception. It's going to be at the Waste Pro Museum, which if you you like cars. This is kind of a history of garbage trucks. It's pretty fascinating. And that will be December ninth. Significant others are welcome to come. We'd love to have you. Just you'll be there for the R S V P. And then our next lunch and learn we will have will be January fifteenth in Longwood. We would love to have somebody else come and participate. And we kind of had a little bit of a challenge after COVID and now we're just rebuilding back up, but. We'd love to have Windermere involved and if you have any questions, you can go to tri county league of cities dot com. So thank you very much.
Thank you, John. We'll we'll do that. And it is one of one of the best things that comes out of things. Like this is the ability to wrestle with problems and bounce ideas off. We both. Have small groups departments, so we both work with. Fire services and often we kind of felt ideas about okay, how do we work to make sure we're we're doing the best we're supposed to. Just having that access is always appreciated. Thank you, John. Thank you.
I have the Goget and I have the Waste Pro Museum in my front yard. The truck broke down last time until later. Some people don't have their trash. It's not my fault. Daryl Nunley and Dan, is it is it Webb or Webb? You guys wanted to refer until the beginning of first time in many years. So.
Sure.
Next up then is Missy and our three thirty west second half.
Hello, buddy. It's saying my name is Hannah Mar three fifty one second. I just had a question about the bathroom for the town hall. I saw before and it looks like there's an equal accommodation on each side, three men, three women, and then some extensions on one side. Or outdoor bathroom on each side. Is that correct?
Yes.
Are the extensions on the sides of the bathroom and outdoor sink on each side?
The sink down there.
No, that's just a water closet for cleaning, but when we get to the item, I'm going to give a detailed explanation of some of those things. And some of those things were options. So if you can wait for the item, I will go over everything and what was optional.
My suggestion I wanted to make is I women's bathrooms need to be bigger than that because. Women are three times more likely to take children to the bathroom. Stalls take up a lot more room than a urinal. And women spend a lot more time going to their issues. They're going along line on the side. So if that. Extension, it could be two more stalls or something like that. I think that would accommodate people a lot better.
Okay, yeah, I took the comment down.
Right. We did. We did, as you have a plaque to honor. Mrs. Mayor Mary Frances Howard, she's resigning from the Historical Preservation Board. But she was not able to attend the answer. We will take care of that first at our next meeting. Next up is old business and we'll start with that. This is a Sony variance request to see. Dash zero three or nine and four Main Street. This is Daniel and Sandra Webb. This is the demolition reconstruction of portions of existing. At less than the peak of the normal high water elevation. Well, we tabled this item. From October twenty eighth. And I believe we have the additional information requested. I'll let Brad start and then we'll. Be out looking and we'll really title. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Then I'm Brad. This is why you have to serve you to contact the town planner. So as a mayor, just referenced, what you had before you this evening is continuation of the hearings you held on October twenty eighth. For a variance request at nine and four Main Street. Again, just so y'all are aware of Mr. Webb and his. They are here this evening and I know they want to present to you as well. So what has happened since your meeting on October twenty eighth is they have submitted revised information. Based on feedback that they received from you all at the last hearing. They did submit a revised site plan, which is what a mayor you references. They actually updated it and sent a new one in. To us on Friday afternoon that Dorothy sent out to you all yesterday. So the one that you've received yesterday is the one that's for your consideration this evening. That is the updated site plan. Also, what they updated is that the survey that was included with the agenda item on October twenty eighth. The applicant has has represented that that was an outdated survey, not correct. They submitted a new survey. A newer survey, as she said. As part of this agenda item, which is in your agenda packet. The difference between the two surveys. Is the location of where that Omaha High Water Elevation Line actually falls. What's important though is the actual elevation ninety eight point four. That stays the same. That doesn't change. That's actually set by Orange County Environmental Protection. That's a published number. So that is where that Omaha High Water Elevation is, but what did change is where the survey shows where that line falls on the property. So what you see on the new survey, the newer survey that's in your packet. The Omaha High Water Line falls further away from the existing pool. That's there. However. That pool is still less than fifty feet from the Omaha High setback. So it really doesn't make any. Important difference in terms of what we're talking about this evening. The where the existing pool sits based on this updated survey is it's. Thirty one feet at the closest point. And forty four feet at the furthest point. Now, as I stated in my staff report, the African has it three feet further. And the difference is they took that dimension from the edge of the pool deck. My dimension is from including the catch area below the pool, because that's still part of the structure. So that's that's that three foot difference. The reason, again, the reason for this variance is that what your code states, it has a non-informing structure, which this pool is. As was presented previously. This pool is constructed in two thousand and eight. And unfortunately, it was not built compliant with the fifty foot setback even at that time. That now it's now that they're coming to basically demo it and reconstruct it with a revised decking. Making the deck and elevating, making it higher, reconfiguring the pool, maybe an infinity edge pool. What your code says about that is now that has to come into compliance with the fifty foot setback. Because they are renovating it. They're demoing and building. So that's the reason for the variance. In terms of. Our analysis of it. You see in the staff report, I did have comments about. You know, they didn't do the calculations right on the stormwater. So that can did receive those comments, so they did update their stormwater that they're showing, which is what you received yesterday. That now does correctly calculate that that. Volume storage. Which is one thousand one hundred seventeen cubic feet. So they did update that on the plan that you had before you this evening. And so, but I also need to say, if this does go through and gets approved and you do include that condition that they provide that storage. We still need them to submit a full engineered sign and sealed plan for the grading and drainage to confirm. Those calculations, to confirm those those swales and to confirm the grading in that backyard. Not just as they show now, it says slope, because they are slowing down. But it would have to be fully entered. That would be part of the building permitting process. Also, so you are aware, we also asked the town's lake consultant Amy. To take a look at that, this request because of the pool and relationship to the lake. Amy's response to us was just that. As long as everything was properly engineered, she had no objection to it. And actually, then she referenced Orange County. But but still she she had no comment on it. As long as everything is properly engineered. Which would be a requirement under the building permit if this does get approved. In terms of your review, I just want to make it clear that y'all are aware of where how you have to look at this when you make the decision. And this is inland development code under section ten point oh two point oh two. Is you need me to make a finding that says that the need for the variance arises out of the physical surroundings. Shape, topographical condition, or other physical environmental conditions. That are unique to the subject property. Variance should be granted for conditions peculiar to the property, not the results of actions of the property owner. So that's that first condition or standard as you do your evaluation tonight on this variance that you have to bring that in mind because to. For you all to issue the approval. You have to make that finding that they meet all these conditions. I I will submit to you. The other conditions are pretty simple and I don't think there's an issue. You know, with those, but I think that's the one to focus on as you make your evaluation. With that, that's what I have to present to the scene. And if there's any questions for me, I would have to answer them. Again, I know the applicant likes to.
Right. Point of clarification. So in your statement, are you suggesting that as as a portion of our. If the variance is approved, does a portion of that approval include the signed and sealed? Updated retention drawings instead?
Yes, sir.
Council, any questions for Brad?
Did we also talk a little bit about like the post inspection? I know. Randy brought that up because I'm giving you the path and you know that and we feel like having all the people some of the stuff. Is that included in the article we're talking about too?
That could be you and your deliberation. If you want to make that a condition in some way, you can do that. We did speak with the town attorney about that. She may have some guidance if that's what they would like to do.
Would that not be covered in our normal permitting closeout?
Yeah. So what we understand in terms of the normal permitting closeout, assuming this gets approved, they they do. You know, the plan, the system with what's approved. When they instructed it, then we have to do the final inspection prior to close out of the permanent. So there is a final inspection that happens no matter what you all do tonight. But the perm is for sure that it is properly constructed. Before the permit would be posted out.
I do think that feedback probably came from something that I I had indicated that it occurred on another situation similar to this. Or we were promised some some important pieces of that project and we didn't. When you see those, we we noted that and then basically told us to bounce sand. So you know, that that doesn't sit very well. The difference is, you know, I know where Daryl lives, so you know, but we can certainly. We could certainly made that a part of it. And I'm sure that if approved, we're sure it's done correctly. So. Any additional comments from council tonight? Any questions for Brad?
Yeah, just a quick question, Brad. So there were two other stipulations that were put in from D R P. One was the stormwater swells, including water drainage station, rain garden. And then the third one was the property owner's report of conservation. Do you have any opinion on those two conditions?
Sure. So on the rain garden, I do think that's a positive. So what? You know, when they construct it, we don't just end up with a ditch in the backyard. You have something that's functional, that's technological friendly, and we have guidance that we can utilize. IFIS provides a fantastic guidebook on how to do rain garden. Orange County also has good resources on how you can do a rain garden in these biosills, basically is what they would turn into. So I do think that would be a good thing to include as part of your condition. I think it's also positive with property owners, again, they have something that's maybe more attractive than just the ditch in the backyard. In terms of the conservation, he's been on that conversation with Brock and the town attorney about this as well. I don't think it's needed. I I I think the oversight that we have in terms of permitting and final inspection. And also the variance, because what happens with the variance. The variance runs with the land. It it's it's there because when you if you issue the variance, it's about the land. It's not about what the person wants to do. So that variance approval and any conditions that would apply to it. Would continue to run with the land. And I think the town attorney has suggested how to make that very clear if that were to happen.
I just want to say to to answer a little bit what Tom was asking. The other part of the conversation we had, Tom, was about the inspect. And Anthony had said. When we approve it, it's a final final permit. That's it. Then it's done. So two years from now, three years from now, if it fills in, they sell the property, you know, new owners fill in. Then it becomes an issue for having code enforcement come out to authorize. You know, if they haven't failed to see it or get permission from a neighborhood property that somebody's turned it in, that they feel that it's filled in. Do you want to give the applicant a chance to? You said they wanted to speak as well.
We should.
I mean.
I want I don't know their. I mean, I think what I'd like to hear is that they're. In agreement with some of these things, I think they are. So. As long as you guys have asked all your questions to Brad, we can certainly hear from him. Yeah, okay. Thank you, Brad. Appreciate you.
Appreciate it.
Daryl certainly gives both of us give us your name and that.
Daryl Nunley, one 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 three seven Lake Butler Boulevard, here on behalf of Dan and Michelle, what Sandra Webb. Love to answer any questions directly or I can. Go more specifically to. The last meeting's concerns and they were definitely valid concerns. And we tightened up our our presentation. To show that the retention is not only the first one inch. But it's one and a quarter inches of of surface water that would come, you know, from the front yard, you know, dirt made. To the backyard before hitting the seawall and eventually. You know, making its way to to. I think you said word aquifer, but we all know that water goes down. So it's very efficient. Hopefully, it's it's a good presentation where you all can see it and understand it. The. Swell systems have gotten larger. The to to Brad's. Correction, the distance we had measured earlier from the seawall was really most more to the pool deck. Not that planter in front. So our setback request is roughly thirty. Thirty four fifteen, so sixteen feet on the right hand side. And then. About six ish feet on the left hand side is our various request. And we do the steps that were a little bit harder to read on our last site plan. If you look at the top left. Corner of the drawing where it says proposed steps to grave, everything is this inside the pool deck. And not into any setback issues. So there's nothing other than flat work. It would be in the setbacks of the side yard. And if there's any questions, I'd love to try to answer them specifically.
Council, any questions for the applicant, excuse me?
I don't necessarily have questions. I do appreciate the effort at, you know, moving things around and giving the extra, you know, quarter inch of rainfall. You know, when I'm looking at this though, and you look at where the location is of the pool in reference to the house. You know, the point that Brad brought up, I think is an important one. I don't know that I I don't feel that there is a. A topographical or physical condition of the land itself that's creating this hardship. It's just, you know, that the pool's already there. They want a new one. So I still think that we're not meeting the criteria. Unfortunately, and we have, I mean, we have a lot of these properties along them, you know, when I look even at the aerials of the properties next door. There's people with pools on both the north and south of the applicant and they're setback. They're not nearly as close as this one is now. And it's still moving it closer. So. I make a motion that we deny because it's not meeting the criteria comparing.
Council, you have a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Sure, I would be.
Is there an update on this?
It's a unique piece of property and its current condition, it's got zero retention. So I agree with Luke. It'd be nice to go further back and it probably should be. But are we hurting ourselves? When we look at this and go, are we missing the opportunity to improve? The drainage and the future drainage. Because I very much agrees with you. We need to come up with a process, which is not this, well, we thought, but. Of monitoring the variance that we're going forward. Three, five years now to make sure that they run the land. My kind of fear is we deny this. It's again, full stage ways. It's not changing. Zero water retention. You know, it's just, I mean, you walk the property. I'm I know you went out there, right?
I now.
You ever visited?
I tried.
Okay, okay. A lot of us have. You know, you walk down the side of the house and see it's flat and there's. Zero retention anywhere. So it's all coming off dirt paint. It's all coming down the side of the yard and it's all running into the lake. So I mean, that that's the. I'm seeing that as part of our issue here. It's is what is best. In the overall design. Because it's not expanding. The impermeas. It's not coming any closer than it already is. Because the pool deck isn't changing. It's not coming any further. What we're getting is the the balance of the water retention that they're not providing from that.
Yeah, it's true.
And if I could say one thing, the impermeas is getting regapped. About six to seven hundred square feet. By that huge stair system in the back going away and some of the side. Walkway going away and becoming a more functional.
You could use a you could use a purbius. Option there potentially. We heard that back or the paper. Yeah, I mean, we used it in the back there. I mean, there's all there are options. That's.
Yeah.
Just a suggestion.
Yeah, right now, we're if I I think I'm correct. Right now, we're around ninety two hundred. Square feet of M M purpose and we're going down to eight thousand five hundred, which is around a six hundred, seven hundred dollar, seven hundred square foot. Bit or or curvaceous area creation. If I'm stating it correctly.
I mean, I I I understand what you're saying, but obviously I can't. That's why I said it weren't. Catch the rain ball and I I like what they did. But my I guess my concern is like when you're looking at the strong, you look at where it's right now. It's a kidney bean shaped pool. And on the wall, this drawing with the new retention, we don't have a new pool on here, but. You know, if you took the debt back, the retaining wall that's there now and you back it up. I don't know what the distance is because there's no dimensions on here, but say it's like five or ten feet. Then the existing pool could have the infinity edge right there. And then it's not, I mean, yes, you're you're losing some space on the deck, but there's room to like squish that pool a little bit this way, a little bit this way. You know, yes, maybe you don't have as huge of a deck, but if what you really want is that infinity edge pool. Then you could still have the infinity edge pool. You know, I don't feel like there's been any compromise. I understand there's compromise for the swells, but I don't feel there's any compromise to pushing that pool around. This isn't a small deck. I mean, my my pool deck is. Maybe three feet around the perimeter. Probably going because pools in town. But my deck is very small. Mind you, it's too small. I'd love to be able to chase ones out there. But I mean, when you purchase a house, you know what you're purchasing it. But if you want something like an infinity pool. There is room to squish that quarter, just like when the Walker property came three, four years ago. There was an option to put that as the second house from. The bridge. There was an option to put the pool inside yard. There was an option to, you know, squish it this way or that way. And what really heated down to is the applicant not wanting to do that. I don't know if that's been discussed on this one.
It has been brought up.
Mayor, real quick. There's a motion second for council discussion unless there's a question posed to the applicant from council. This is the time for council to discuss.
All right, I think it's my turn. I live totality of it all. I don't disagree with what Maggie's saying. But I think it's a totality of it all and Andy's points are very valid. It's going to improve the property. Unless I'm concerned to Brad, Amy from Lake Advisory did not have an objection to it. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so D R B did not have an objection to it, they think. They voted unanimously. The neighbors around it did not have any objection to it. It was part of.
Uh the swell system, that is a big plus for me. And the impervious production, it sounds like you've accepted a lot of boxes, if you ask me, so. That's my input, I am, I'm gonna vote to approve it. Based on those factors.
What's the square footage of the pool deck or am I supposed to ask that in our discussion?
No, you can ask staff or you can ask the applicant. It's just, again, it's time for the council to discuss.
Pool deck and then a new pool deck, regardless of the pool in the middle of it.
Give me a moment to find out exactly and I I will, I will find out.
Daryl, I think it's on the plans, but they're equal. The pool deck is the second.
Right, yeah, that that's a, that's a valid statement. If the pool deck doesn't change for footage at all, relocation of the pool, because the pool is still. Impervious, but I need to, I need the answer for you and I'm gonna give me a moment and I'm gonna figure that out. So I do have, it may even be in my packet, but I have.
So you shake off part of that deck, how much square foot? You know, not the whole bit, but even part of it, how how much space do you lose? Because that shifts the infinity edge.
I don't, I don't know that you can get enough at thirty one. That five, five foot three inches from the spot that I'm dealing with that. So, you know, I don't know, well, first of all, I don't like engineering things up here. It always does bad, it's bad engineering. Um but the other thing is that you think there's some. There's gonna be some challenges, I can't wait to think it, but I don't know that you have it there. With a simple solution, I think after the reason.
One of our big concerns with starting this whole process was the safety issue of coming out of the house, down two steps to the deck, down. Four steps to the pool deck, it's just a lot of steps. And it's just unsafe for for elderly or children. And that was one of the driving forces of leveling things out and then the concept of the infinity pool. Spray because of heights and elevations. And then and then we realized that if you change anything, we need a variance. So even to change the stairs. I need a variance, I need approval. Because this construction or deep deep construction.
You see, if you got, if council will vote it.
Council, real quick, um Brad can comment on that last statement.
Yeah, if 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 all the work was was to convert the stairs to say a ramp. To, that would not trigger this non-performing, because it's really not a significant demo or partial demolition. Which is correcting an access issue, so they could convert those steps to ramp, not triggers any of the variance. The elevation, not not brand.
So just for council, at a vacation here, if you look at that blue line that goes. Right through your middle of the pool. The existing pool, that is the, that's the fifty foot line. So take a, we take a pretty significant. Modification um to make this particular situation perform, you you could certainly lessen the impact. But I I would prefer, that's council's correction, that we don't, that appear that yes, the applicant. As painful as that might be, we. They should be presenting to us, not us, and then, uh you know, just because it's not our. This has been a difficult. Challenge for all of us, you know, we we started a lot of discussion about. The canal, it was for the same reason. So yeah, that's been tricky, I feel for everybody, but. This point, so real quick, yes, a question, Daryl, when when was the existing pool to property?
I believe it was before two thousand three or nineteen, was it nineteen ninety five?
But it was two thousand eight, that's one of them.
When this physical pool was, I was thinking it was in the nineties and then it was refurbished through the cavers back in early six thousands.
The twenty twenty-ish years, so I agree with everything that Andy and Tom said, in addition, you know, that they. Upgraded the pool, um also benefits the health of the water. There's two types of concrete, concrete that's cracked and concrete that will. Um so, you know, reconstructing this um with these, the current engineering controls uh to enhance this property. I think it's a benefit of ours as well, so I agree with everything Tom and so. So any further council discussion? All right, so we have a current motion and a second for. You denied to, so um so we need to vote on that. Um vote on that at this point. Getting the council person hands. So that motion is denied, uh three to one with council person David. Uh Williams and Shrew. I'm just sitting. Now, so at this point, um we can have this bring it back to us. You can make a new motion, right, council? Mara, the director of motion would approve the uh variance. But she can approve by council person David's looking for a saying.
I think it's missing something. Yeah, go ahead.
Let's let's, let's do the second, we're supposed to, second, second council person who votes things. Now, council person needs.
So, uh considering, I didn't know how other council members are performing, so tonight, I wish my this would go. I have a lot of conversations with Brad and Heather. Um regarding that if we're gonna do this, that we put special conditions in that we talked about, which is re-inspecting it. Um different numbers were thrown out, I know at the last council meeting, we said five years. Um I spoke with Brad and then and they said, you know, maybe we can be yearly or every couple of years. So I think we need to put a condition on that, that we're following up with it. Uh the other thing is, is that we can work on a resolution. That from now on, if we're allowing, you know, swales in areas near the lake, so we can come back and re-inspect it overall as a policy for the town. And if we get that resolution written up for our next council meeting, we can pass it and then retroactively. Have it apply to this variance as conditions that we can. So I think in addition, if if we're gonna do it, we alter what the conditions are. And at least make sure that we're, you know, making sure that things are checked on in a couple of years, because in a lot of these. Almost every house you've had is like itself, like a year or two later, so and then nothing, nothing is. It's not protecting the lake if the soil shows and.
Sorry, council member, um. To make it retroactive, it would have to be something that the property owner agrees to as part of the variance.
I have a different suggestion. If you want to ask the property and if they would agree to the annual inspection. Um Brad and I talked about this, what we could do is have a resolution specifically for this variance. Which would be recorded in the public records, so it would, all variances run with the land, however, usually there's not something that's. Repeating in the future, um that would need to be, that someone would need to be on notice of, so. We would have that recorded in the public records, so someone would know that that's. Running with the land and then the town can just do that, but first you should ask the. When you come up with the conditions that you would like to have, you should ask the app, the property owner if they agree.
I personally don't like that idea of of having a reinspection. I mean, where do we go to the line? Do you come and inspect my electricity every five years? I mean. I maybe, I don't like that at all. I don't like giving a permit for something and having to worry about. Somebody not coming in during a year later to make sure I'm still in compliance. I don't, for me, that doesn't sit well at all. It's just something I, you know what, I I say on the day of inspection, if it passes. It's not like homeowner to keep up, it's just like the rest of us, we get inspection based on all stuff, we, the bank doesn't know that, you check twice, nobody checks it twice, I don't. I just don't like, I don't want to go to the line I'm at. Um I'll say we should make him and his family do something that. Not everybody has to do, and I don't know how to do that.
I don't think you do either. I I it is a bit concerning to me, and I, but I just, not sure where that goes, it's interesting. Um I think what what I would suggest to council is that we put clear. Expectations and requirements for the drums, drainage, proper pervious ratios. Um what the, what the rain garden is per se. And uh we have guidance on that because we've used it for a couple of town projects. Uh make that the requirement. Uh for inspection. Um if you want to, if if council wants to go to a different. A different uh process for. Follow-up inspections, I I I think that that would need to be something that's like fairly across the board. Because this is not a situation that is a one property situation. Um we know that, we've had a discussion about it, it's difficult to implement. Uh doesn't mean it can't be done, but I think it's a separate item, in my opinion.
That, I mean, because I understand what you're saying, Tom, this isn't a permit, like if you change electrical in your house. Nobody can come in and inspect that later, you're correct. But this is affecting the waterways, it's affecting the environment for everybody. It's not just if your house burns down because you did your electrical wrong or you didn't pull permit. To put in a so, you know, a new socket or whatever. This is affecting the lakes for the entire community. I had two houses constructed across the street from me, I only lived here since two thousand sixteen, I've been here nine years. Both of those soils were filled in, in the right way and in their front yards. And the only reason they had it corrected is because somebody could see them.
I don't disagree with you, uh but I just don't think we should make any stipulation on his request.
The reason why I should say, if I'm understanding correctly, that rather than doing it as the retroactive one and doing it specific to his. It's only so that it triggers the variance to show up, but if if and when the property sells, so that the new homeowner is aware it exists. That's all that's for, it's not like a cloud on the title, but it's something that catches when they do their title closing. That will catch it and say, hey, this runs with this land, it alerts the new buyer to the property. That that is on there. It's not like the specific, you're singling out this person. That's just a matter of the way the records will make it trigger if the property sells. We can still go forward, make a resolution for all of them, and it doesn't have to be as often as yearly, but I mean, this is affecting the environment and the lakes for everybody. Not just one person's home.
Yeah, I know, those are valid points. Um once again, I vote yes to the various requests and no to the situation.
So Mayor Vesta, I'd like to amend my motion to include the stormwater swales. Rear of the property capture at least one inch of stormwater on the property, stormwater swales to include the water vegetation. Thank you, council person David. Um council person David is the motion maker, council person Williams second it, are you friendly to that amendment?
Yes.
And council person Williams, friendly to that amendment, any further? Discussion, councilman.
And we managed to say, add in the drawings for the one and a quarter inch. As they defined it and what was presented to us, so that we aren't getting more than one inch of it.
Council person David, my motion is uh. Dependent with what you already read. And it wouldn't, and and your motion doesn't stop from retaining an inch and a quarter because you said at least an inch. Correct?
Yes.
We can vote if council person's true.
And the motion is to approve, Mike, it's to approve.
The variance request carries sort of three to two with um council person hands and council person. For the record, thank you, council, that is.
Thank you very much. Next up is Kimberly Moore, and I am due number one thirty eight, so amendment number one, Windermere Water and Measurings Roundabout Design. An amount of twenty seven thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars, so I can also just state.
Yes, so Mary did pass out the amended IPO in front of you, it's eighteen thousand four hundred. Sorry. There's a new amended IPO.
Yes, eighteen thousand, so for the record, the. Kimberly Moore IPO number one, amendment number one, I put it in a road in Measurings Roundabout Design, it's at eighteen thousand nine hundred and forty. Dollars from syrup sets. Yes, cheaper better. And I would, it's that, I always think most of the time, get cheaper, council really, most people approve it.
Questions to approve?
Should approve, council person David, second? Second?
Second.
Council discussion. Where do you wanna hear from?
So how do you think? You came down, we got a discussion about the total scope of this, um. Understanding the scope still needs to kind of be flushed out a little bit with Marina Bay HOA. Um I I wanna confirm that this is a not to exceed amount. Um if that scope becomes less than you originally intended for design, that this this value could be increased even further.
Yeah, yes, time called person that, that is correct, uh we included schematic design. So during that schematic design phase, we'll leave with the town and Marina Bay as needed to go over this back design. Right now, it's contemplated that we'll be placing a landscaping irrigation in the two quadrants on the east side of the roundabout. As well as maybe something in the splitter island if there's room, and then also demoing the existing side. And then designing two new sides in the southeast and northeast quadrant. So this can be a limited not to exceed amount, where based upon what is decided by Marina Bay and the town for. The treatment of the site and landscaping, we can, we can utilize the scope if we are for you.
This staff, good with that?
Yes, I I met with, or I talked to Hal earlier. He knows that we need to meet with Marina Bay to get confirmation on what we discussed, I think about a year ago. Um but yeah, they understand.
Any further questions, council?
One quick question, is there anybody you like, time is already there? For chance?
Uh I don't, I don't think so, because it's on a slab and it's um, it's a great size, it'd be, it'd be hard to move.
It can only be moved by.
That's something we can look at, but we think that it's unlikely.
That's a good question, that. Council will begin voting with uh also person hands.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, and council approves item the Kimberly Moore IPO number one thirty eight amendment number one, for a N T E of eighteen nine forty. Except under financial items, uh this is, might as well hang out here. Uh Kimberly Moore, I hear two one one, this is L zero three seven zero. Windermere Water Master Plan North Face Final Design, six hundred forty five thousand five hundred dollars. You go to the floor, sir.
Sure, so uh in the executive summary, uh the town, Windermere, received a fully stated grant agreement from the. Florida Department of Environmental Protection from FDP, that was signed on October twentieth, uh twenty twenty five. And it's for the implementation of the file design and permitting for what is known as the Water Main North Face. Uh this is based up on the M U P that was previously done, which is a master utility plan. Uh this uh, this encompasses roughly um. Four miles of water made, like implemented north of the canal. So that would be from Lake Boulevard, Lake Butler Boulevard and the side streets uh into the neighborhoods to the north. The names of the specific, specific streets are listed in the scope. So this scope includes uh final design and permitting of the water main. The permitting would occur through Orange County Utilities and FDP. It also includes bidder and contractor selection support, project management and grant administration. As well as survey and utility investigation services, so the four miles in its entirety will be surveyed. Um and we will have to work with town staff as we did with the central phase to kind of pick the border with the least impact. To trees and to other features adjacent to the right of way. We will have thirty, sixty, ninety and final submittals that we will go to town council with. So that uh there will be chance for input, uh review and approval as we develop the plans. Um and so that is in summary of of what's included, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions? What's the current working estimate for the progress?
So the current working estimate for this phase, we did a estimate of probable construction cost. And it was six million, around six million and fifty thousand with no contingency. We add a fifteen percent contingency to account for some escalation over the next couple of years, so the construction cost will be roughly seven million dollars.
So this is roughly ten percent.
Yes, a little bit less, but let's measure up to ten.
Comfort with that, Councilperson? That's good, fair. Any additional questions, council? Seeing none. They're looking forward and motion to approve.
Motion to approve, motion to approve, Councilperson David, second?
Thank you.
Second, Councilperson Haynes. Further discussion, council. Seeing none, will we get in, vote in Councilperson's group?
I.
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 Kimberly Horn IPO, so one in line, waiting for, uh, passage on the episode. Next up is Kimberly Horn, I mean, guys are just waiting, she had office. It's just happened to me, there's a lot of others, she had two hundred and thirty, uh. Uh, public rescue, uh, site civil plans, uh, eight thousand eight hundred and seven dollars. Sent on this answer.
Yes, so, uh, town staff reached out to us and asked us to provide a proposal for the paving, grading and drainage plan for the new town for these restrooms. So this would include, uh, a existing demolition plan, uh, for removal and relocations. A site plan for site geometry, boundary dimensions, A G A compliant parking and sidewalk connections. As well as grading and utility plans for the water connection. And also including a stormwater pollution prevention plan or a sweep fee plan with erosion control. And all the civil details and construction specifications, so we will assist with providing that information as a bid package for the construction. Of the, uh, town restroom facilities.
Will that include our septic planning or is that a separate thing?
Septic plans are typically designed and permitted by the vendor, so it excludes the septic system.
Council, any further questions?
Question staff, why did we support these with the septic package and? And architectural factor?
Because, um, the architect, Mr. Price, didn't have that service availability within his shop, so we asked Kimberly Horn to provide that for us.
So.
Yeah, yeah, so, and Mr. Price has already done some of the work, so he, he had already done the restroom back here, we were just. Taking that plan and concept and moving it over there, and he made some additional changes to that on the schematic that you see tonight, based on the change of location.
They really hung somewhere else, it's quite a, you know. The architect, so to Kimberly Horn, like, differently.
I know, we're still gonna talk about the next item. Um. Yeah, but I kind of like to talk about that, and so if if we. You know, there's a little extra monouns and stuff that you're gonna explain in the next part. So if this changes a little bit, and he's getting knows to proceed to inform on that, that kind of change what he could do, something like that, point it out first.
So one of the reasons we approached Kimberly Horn about those because they are engineer of record, so we could easily ask them for the proposal on this. Since we've already bid out engineering services through them, um, we were attempting to expedite this project because it has been detained. For about a year and a half, um, so we felt this was the most expeditious way to move forward with that.
May I ask, does, some stupid question, what is that exactly involved, you talking about? What, what exactly does it involve, like practically, it doesn't involve designing the bathroom or constructing the bathroom, what are you talking about, actually talking about?
Um, just basically everything up to the building itself. Everything, everything, uh, around and up to the building. Um, understand the, um, we under- understand the concern that with two engineers on board, engineer and architect, there may be some overlapping scope. But it's not unusual for the civil engineer to do everything up to the building envelope and the architect take it from there. Um, so we would be okay with that and we would coordinate with the town and the architect, and that's included within the scope. Uh, but definitely up to town council on how that should be done.
Are you, you talking about like plumbing and drainage and power and all that stuff?
Uh, plumbing and, uh, the waterline going in, the drainage and the grading, uh, but not the power.
Okay, so we saw that power and then. Get out of this. You know, the power usually goes with the building. Talking about just the site itself?
Just the site itself, the site front.
Well, that includes parking access.
Parking access, correct.
So, yeah.
Yeah, side blocks up.
Don't, right inside, well, that's a good, yeah.
Does that include demolition, or, you know, the, the septic tank that's underground now, do we have to do something with that? I know, but usually you ban it to ones that you fill them in, does it actually have to be removed, is that part of what you have to include in this?
Obviously.
Right.
It it would be removed, we could, we could help with some coordination of the septic tank vendor for removal and replacement, I mean, we could show that in our plan. Of the removal of septic tank, uh, but then the, uh, replacement of the new tank would be by a vendor.
That's part of that.
Yep, that could be part of the vendor.
I think this, Uber staff, the intent is to test the septic system to see if this is still functional.
No, it's not, it's not functional, we know we'll have to have a new one. Just to meet code and everything anyways.
Time to open code. And we're gonna need a variance for. From, uh, health department at state level. Is the question.
Well, there's no available wastewater, so they have to provide us with a, with a septic tank, they can't deny us the ability to have that. It's just we'll have to go through the process with the health, yeah.
They can deny it.
Yeah, they can, they can, but whoever the vendor is for septic will have to go through that process and their process will be taking it through the health department.
You could also, so the, the, the developer builder cannot do site prep?
This is just going to be a site.
Uh, we're paying for site prep.
No, pay on the site.
Site prep is not.
Yeah, we utilize Tom Price because the intention was to place the bathrooms next to town hall. His specialty is historical buildings, historical restoration. Um, there is no requirement that we utilize Tom Price for this project because it's not an historical area, it's, it's backed by the library. Um, I would recommend that we utilize the services for anything we do with town hall, because that's his expertise. Um, but if you want us to go and get a quote for. Well, I mean, one house kind of thing, then.
Does it all.
I'm okay with it, but this one is just, I don't like doing it.
Understood.
So.
All right. So. He's done everything he's heard, we'll, we'll talk, uh, next about the architect, we'll, we'll go ahead and ask for approval to do this this way, this time in the future, we'll. Use the same.
But they don't still, you can still adjust things if anyone gets tweaked in the other part or fix them, correct?
So mayor motion to approve, um, this proposal, if we would not to exceed now. Eight thousand. Seven.
Eight thousand seven. Eight thousand eight hundred and seventy for IPO two one two. Yeah, uh, motion maker is Councilperson David. Second, what I think, second, Councilperson David. We'll begin to vote in Councilperson's names.
I.
All right.
I.
I.
I. Council, I, number two, is Kimberly Horn IPO two one two, the passage unit. Like. With this, um, right start of this, we can stretch out, I mean, as much as I can with it, that can be anything restroom facility. J Street, Jolene Library, as of the collision, fifteen thousand five hundred and seventy, it was seventeen thousand fifty dollars. Time to, you know.
Yes, sir.
On this side.
I am. So, good evening, mayor and council members, tonight we're presenting the proposal from Architect Tom, Architect Tom Price, who has been working with the town on the rehabilitation plans for town hall. And who designed the original standalone restroom previously planned behind town hall. As you recall, council decided earlier this year to relocate the family restroom facility to the area beside the Windermere Library. The proposal represents the next step, moving forward into construction documents. The original design behind town hall required more historical detailing to complement the landmark building. The new version is envisioned as a standard public park style restroom designed with materials and finishes that complement the library and surrounding civic buildings. Attached to your packet was a preliminary schematic concept drawing provided for illustration only. And tonight at the dais, we have placed a more detailed version of that showing exterior finish and dimensions. That has also been provided to our town clerk for the record. This is not a final design, as construction documents are developed, the thirty percent and sixty percent plan sets will return to town council for review and confirmation before any design is finalized. Mr. Price's preliminary concept that you have today includes several optional design enhancements intended to improve maintenance accessibility and family use. None of these are fixed decisions, they are ideas for council input before the construction documents are developed. For example, sidewings, service closets, you can see off to the left and the right, these small wings on each side of the building house, um, of the building house locked, lubored service closets for janitorial use and easy cleanup. They are optional, one or both could be omitted or repurposed. Toddler fixtures, the plan includes toddler sized toilets and sinks to make the facility more parent friendly. These are optional and can be limited to the family restroom or omitted entirely. Plumbing stub outs can be included for future installation if desired. Spacious layout, interior dimensions were slightly increased to create a more open accessible layout, especially helpful during large town events. This adjustment improves flow and comfort without significantly increasing the footprint. Family friendly features, multiple baby changing stations up to four and conveniently located sinks are included to support parents and caregivers. These are scalable based on council feedback, balancing function with the surrounding architecture. Roof and skylight adjustments, a small flat roof section approximately, approximately four by ten is proposed to accommodate vent stacks, exhaust fans. And solo tube skylights for natural lighting, this is a technical feature and can be refined later. This evening, we're looking for any feedback or direction you'd like us to provide to the architect, particularly features you prefer not to include. Or any you'd like to emphasize before design development proceeds, thank you.
Questions for staff?
I have a. I hope. Anyway, um, I, so I fed the ponya and I actually fed with, um, Mr. Stephen Withers, a chaplain. Um, and I was asking a lot of questions about the, the different things here. Um, so some things that I want to make sure is clear, based on my conversation with Ponya earlier today, so when I said it was a reduced hail. That was not necessarily size.
It's not size, no, it's, it's the aesthetics of it, being here behind town hall, it would have been a nicer, more. Plush restroom facility, moving it out by the library, it can become more of a standard public park restroom.
So, um, a whole thing that, if I'm understanding correctly, and I've been drawn upstairs, and he can answer the question. Um, it says, so what, um. Stephen Withers said when I spoke with him is that the wall would be like a partition wall, and you had explained there won't be air conditioning, there won't be heat. So I'm envisioning this to be a bit like a rest area restroom. Where I can hear what's going on in the men's side and the men can hear what's going on on our side because of the open flow and things at the top.
We, we talked to Mr. Withers, actually had a phone call with Mr. Withers this afternoon, that's one of the items we're not particularly fond of and wanted to talk to the architect about. So if that's something you'd like us to consider, you just need to let us know, and we'll talk to him about it.
Yeah, actually, the current design is that that wall is fully separated and insulated, so there is no crossover sound between the two. What Stephen Withers and I were talking about is aligning the chase walls so that they're flush versus staggered. Uh, between the restroom facilities of the men and the women.
Right, the same.
And then, you know, again. You guys are seeing something that probably still smells like dinner, we just got this drawing, we have not even had a chance to review it, and finally, I haven't had a chance to sit down with Mr. Withers on it. Again, is, well, I would refer to where we are right now as. Early, early, early schematic designs, we knew that you guys liked the layout of the previous restroom that we did, that was approved and vetted through council at numerous meetings. So we use that as the basis of our design initial schematic design, and so that we may have opportunities, you know, because there's still things that I. The two end units stub outs. Are really tended to be a janitor's closet, what we want to do is be able to have toilet paper and everything stored there versus a guy bringing it in green daggers all the time. And then be able to have a mop sink and those kind of things that allow. Architecturally, I see what he did, I don't necessarily know if I agree with it, it, but he was trying to keep it symmetrical and clean and everything else, so. There's a lot of concept stuff that we still need to vet with him, uh, but until you have something on paper, there's nothing to talk about.
Okay, so then I think that it would be beneficial, council folks, about what things we would like to see and what we would not like to see.
Well, I, but, but I've heard the comment, and, and then that is, I think that would be very important for us tonight.
Right.
Is for you all to say, yes, these added features are good, we only need two diaper changing stations with three, one in the family, one in each of the other restrooms, I would highly recommend that. Um, and I know there was a comment today about adding, uh, two more stalls in the women's room, so those are, those are helpful comments. I, what I don't want to do is get what Jim was talking about is where we designed like a midi, because that never goes well for anybody.
Um, so, I mean, obviously, that's my comments, one, I know in the original sign, we had a water fountain and a lot of refilling station, and that's not on here, so I think that's important to have.
But it tends to be an open, it's like, when you have a, at work.
We obviously can't draw plumbing lines down the front wall in the middle.
Oh, you can, but it's not perfect.
Yeah, I have, that's not, I'll, I'll get that. Um, I, you know, I know there was a conversation I had with Ponya about the sinks on either side, the mop buckets. Uh, I understand having stored on site, I just don't know if it needs to be accommodated in like the mop out, because I know that's going to add to the construction cost overall.
That is one thing that we want to look at is having an internal janitor's closet and how that works.
Right. Yeah, maybe something that just makes a little more sense than this. Um, uh, also, there's, you know, it shows in the rent ring that it's going to have like a porch. Patio roof around the entire perimeter of the building, but the footprint doesn't show that. So clarification on whether we want a roof to go a little way around for people to walk in.
The, the roof is only the furniture, so people are waiting, the, which, the, the dotted lines that you're seeing are actually the roof over here, that's the.
Right. Well, it was. Maybe it was, because this is supposed to represent.
It's just the front.
Fly theory, because I have to make sure that we.
Well, that is, if people are waiting in line and it's raining out, yeah.
I agree, I think you should have it on, sure. Um, the other thing is, is I feel like, you know, if, I do like the idea for ladies restroom, I mean, I know that, I don't care where you go. If there's an equal number of men's and women's restroom, the men are always out there waiting on their wives, and the women are still in there, and the women, you know, still traditionally, I think, a lot more of the ones that take the kids in. Uh, so it would be nice and there was a little bit more space for the women than the men, I like the family restroom. Um. The little toilet, little sink, I mean, I guess if you've got three kids, that would be helpful, I don't think we really need them in the handicap stalls. I feel like the handicap stalls in the main bathroom should be for the handicap people and in the family restroom for the family restroom, I think that's a lot of extra. Clutter installed here in a wheelchair, I've been in one recently, so. Um, and then, you know, I actually like to see a little bit more sinks, the other thing I think is there's a lot of dead space for these four years, which I know when we were over here, we were doing that as a privacy thing. Uh, that Stephen had actually mentioned to not see people standing at the urinals, that the doors were open during food trucks and, and things like that, so maybe there could be a better use of that space. I will also say that a lot of restrooms have either the doors that open with the arms or with the foot. And I can tell you in every woman's bathroom that I'm in, if there's like a double door situation, there's paper towels on the floor because women use a paper towel to open the door. So I think we need to have garbage cans in strategic places, touch free things, water faucets that you don't have to hold with your hand, that turn off in twenty seconds. Um, just things that'll keep it litter free, because, you know, the more spaces you have to walk through, I think it's harder for a wheelchair person to go through two sets of doors, it's harder on crutches. Harder than on a stroller. So, just all those things to keep in mind and maybe we tweak and we squish, maybe still keep props down, I don't know what else I think about the sterility mission, I think it would be nice to have that, you know, I think for men's and, all right.
I am. My comments on this, are you done?
Okay, unless you maybe trigger something.
My. Don't be sure, I, you know, my comment on this is. I think this needs to be nice, but it needs to be stripped down, this is never going to replace need of outlets and everything else during our bunches. This is a bathroom for. Uh, when we have farmer's market, we have kids playing on the basketball courts, we have small events in here. It's not for talent events, that is, that is something totally different, and, you know, that's the end, this is an end. Uh, so, you know, I, I'm a big proponent of. Stripping this down, we survived a long time with a concrete shed, you know, for forty years. Um, they know what you want, you know, I don't have the need for, need and air, I think that's a waste. Um. The toddler toilets, I agree with you, they, in the family, and that's it, I, I really want to see this trimmed down for a couple of reasons. One, we're gonna pay, we're paying a premium for price, I don't have a problem with it, because it's only probably eighteen to. I don't have a problem with it because it's only probably eighteen to two month, two or any more, then if we go to somebody else, then they start over. Um, and I think we're far enough down, I do want to caution. That we need to get with the septic company first, figure out what we can do, how many toilets, how many things we can actually have. In this, and the state will allow, so, and design it around that because. Um, I've been down this process as a private citizen and I know the town gets a different. Lay of the land, but when we give a D E P in the health department, Orange County says, eh, no problem, the state all of a sudden says, no, no, it's not. And they count every sink and they count every toilet, so we dump fifteen grand. In design work and then find out, oh, we gotta lose six of it, we're going to spend another five grand and redesign it.
Correct, and that's the intent would be for us to get the concept that everybody likes and then how we did with, uh, a local con. Typically, subject systems are shown as dotted signs on civil plans and then designed by the subject companies and they're going to pull the permit and do all the drawings.
I just want to make sure we don't get too far down.
Yeah, it's no different than what we did with the town facility.
It's just a reminder, yeah, I know you guys remember, but I look at it and I've talked to some, uh, recent, um. Buyers of properties that are wanting to do great things for the town and. They're going to be really handicapped when they get to the toilets and needing new, uh, septic systems. Because the rules keep changing on us, I mean, it's harder here, so, that's my two cents.
No, I was just just back over the comments that are already being made about the efficient use of space, um, you know, there's several other areas in here where we could probably cut it down, you know. Um, those foyer areas, I think are a big waste of space, we may want to move the sinks out to that area. Um, and put additional fixtures, um, specifically.
Well, we may, we may end up having to look at that one, trying to add two more additional stalls, if that's something to.
I think, I think, you know, a lot of people, especially food trucks, just want to go in and wash their hands and maybe go into the restroom. That foyer area is a perfect location for that, so, um. Not sure we need two of the janitorial closets, you know, maybe that goes in the center section accessible by those sides. You know, so.
We may end up using some of the vestibule space, so. The vestibule itself, you know, may seem like a waste of space, it's actually being utilized because you're actually having to run the roof out beyond the family restroom, which is a bump out. So it's not like it's just wasted space and the whole intent behind that part on our previous design. Was that when people went into the bathroom, they weren't opening a door and having direct vision into the rest of the facility.
No, you could, you could definitely.
There are ways to do that, like, you know, I've done with T walls and.
Yeah, but you could decrease the length of the overall structure, I think, by moving the sinks out to the, you know, vestibule or maybe a foyer, something inside.
Or or increase.
Or increase the picture.
Right.
If if.
That's all reason.
Agree.
Okay.
I agree, and I. Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think it's already, I think that it's, I do think that ladies bathrooms should have installers, they, um. Too many events and, you know, men's bathroom, well, right, and and the hybrid, so, um, that.
So my only other thing is, is I, so I happened to look it up, I was curious, and I got on and I just looked up. You know, floor plans for bathrooms, because we don't need to reinvent the wheel, there's billions of different floor plans out there. And when I found something that had similar number of structures for what we have, it's considered stadium. Large park, um, bathrooms, uh, to do anywhere from a hundred and eighty uses per hour to two hundred and forty-five uses per hour. And you're right, I don't think it needs to be huge for food truck, we just need a bathroom here that's both at the time, so, I'm, you know. I'm fine with the amount that we have now, but reconfiguring it, I'm fine with it being smaller. I mean, even when the little, which I told the shed was there, I think at most I maybe waited three more. Parties to go in one stall with my daughter, and mind you, with the toddler, you really want to get in there and people would be nice to want you go, but. Yeah, no, it doesn't, I don't think it needs to even be this big, I think it can be switched around and manipulated, and there's lots of floor plans out there, and most of them have. Like what you were saying, the chase, but they have a center chase down the middle of the building and the floor plans I found online where. You can have a closet, it can be accessed from both sides, it gives you a narrow path to get into plumbing, and plumbing out needs to be fixed without, I have to down a wall.
I wouldn't do it, that's, that's, uh, it does extend the width of the building, I don't think it's necessary with access panels, we just need a double wall to run the pipe from the other, um. I would, just a reminder, the reason that we have this fixture count was the fixture count that was done by. Uh, like Brady, when we were building the restrooms over there, so this fixture count was developed for about three hundred.
Yeah, which is is not a event for our town, our town of this sort of eight, nine hundred people, for our town, so.
I'm sorry. I I would like to avoid getting fourth less whenever possible, so. Alright, so my only comment is, uh, going way back into my early life, I once ran a. Turnpike and, uh, interstate, Chris. It's an actual state contract, so, uh, I think my only pushback would be on the climate control. Um, discussion. They do need to be climate controlled because, first of all, they won't dry, um, makes it more difficult to clean. Um, or odor issues, it's just, that's the nation you can't control, or, I thought it was just my opinion.
My husband's suggestion would be to use like the European style slim lines, except there's ones that you don't just have to have them out on the wall, there's not ceiling versions that can be quite small. And they don't have to be on all the time, they should be on to dry out, the floor is keeping humidity lows, people aren't slipping, which actually, you know, like, what's on?
Or, yeah, it's just hard to be being building without line of control. And if you'll go to all the rest areas and everything, they're all.
Some of them can be so, I mean, you can have a small taller, actually. Or something, it doesn't have to be on all the time, either.
I, yeah, I just, it's kind of, it's also be a business controller, but listen, that's, uh, you guys work it out, that's just fine. Any additional, uh, suggestions for the team? That was very comprehensive, thank you, that's a good suggestion.
Right.
What is our motion to approve? Will begin voting, councilperson, true?
Aye.
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 Well, Jim, I think it's just for clarity for us, because I I've kind of heard two. The size is okay, but we also talked about adding two stalls, just for clear direction on our behalf, so that when we go back to the architect to qualify. Climate control for sure, is that what I hear you all saying? Climate control for sure, is that what I'm, is that the direction by council?
That's my opinion.
Okay, because we didn't talk about not doing it, so I just want clarity.
I think it's been considered as all that, and and I know we talked about, if we have, we should look at the footprint. Maximize the efficiency of the footprint and the storage, if that leads you to the ability to add. And stalls, we should do that.
Okay.
You know, they'll never be cheaper than when you're building.
And if you do.
Walk away with that areas and use them for stalls and in different orientation than than we have stalls.
Yeah, it looks like there's, I agree, I think there's a lot of room for efficiency. There's very few places where you're going to just too many, you know, especially on the female side.
There, we can add.
Yeah, I think those are the only two, I'm a rare area, stood up for two sod.
I mean, we're gonna have to set up another meeting in about two weeks anyway, so we can maybe have a workshop on exactly what you are expecting out of this, so we can give clear direction to Tom Price.
That's fine, that's fine, buddy, whatever, whatever we need to do to make it.
Thank you.
So. Under degenerates for consideration, we have initial funding approval discussion Tuesday night. Robert, are you going to take the lead on that discussion? I know some of you have our finance team here as well, so.
Yeah, no, I can take the lead on this, I mean, the good thing is that we have a lot of projects going on right now, the bad thing is they cost all the month. Um, we've been working on these projects for over six years now, um, and just our luck, they all come to fruition at the same time. And with that, besides mics. Yeah, a- and with that, you know, we have a lot of state appropriations, we have H M G P grants, female monies coming in. Or supposed to be coming in, um, but we need to float some of the payments. Because it takes, I mean, right now, we've been waiting for about eight hundred thousand dollars from the state and federal government, um, for over ninety days. Um, but we want to make sure that we're in still the good, the good graces.
So you were constantly looking where we can, but. But we want to maintain that we're still in same good graces with the contractors that are out there doing the work. Um, typically in a contract that we have, we have thirty days in order for us to pay for that, um, payout, whatever they have. You know, certain threshold, timeframe, timeline, um, and right now, you know. We pretty much committed all of our reserves because we're still waiting for, as the more we come in, all the ancillary taxes, um, so. What finance did was they talked to a couple of banks and then we were aware of, uh, the Florida cities and Florida counties. They had a loan program, that loan program is pretty much the lowest interest rate that you're going to see, they start two point nine eight seven percent. What if you just, you still tap on certain, um, uh, other ancillary percentages, it comes out to be about three point seven eight percent. Or whatever you take out, um, so if we took out the entire two million, then it'd be about sixty eight hundred dollars a month. That we pay, but it's only on what you take out, so, what I'm saying, you know, we. For two million in the hole, it's pay, we need the money in order to make sure that we save flow while we have all these projects coming in at one time. Um, we didn't anticipate this happening, you know, we have West Second Avenue, Bestie Butler, um, you know. Agolia, and then we have the, uh, Ward Trail, all coming at the same time, in addition to the central water phase. North Water Phase, and then probably the next consummation, you have the South Water Fix, so what typically happens is, we pay the vendors. Then we have all the cancelled checks, we send it to the state for them to approve it, and then they send us the money. So it's just bad timing with everything coming in at one time. So, so we're looking for a motion to move forward with, um, applying for the F L C. Loan, and then a subsequent meeting, which we're hoping to have on the eighteen, would be for you to approve resolution for us to go ahead and. Enact the loan and have all the details of the actual loan itself, if that makes sense. Yeah, so the tool to utilize, uh, to carry costs and funding for. Several programs that we have to outlay the cash upfront, um, and then wait for reimbursement from the state and the federal government. Which I can tell you is not too figure of quick, uh, especially right now, so depending on which. Which arm you're dealing with, what department, um, right. And then, so this would be, just to clarify, this is to utilize for reimbursable costs essentially as a, as a funding stream.
Yes, sir.
Council, any questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, um, where are we at on our reserves right now, where we sit?
Well, we currently have about one point two, but the problem is that those are pretty much committed to the projects that we have right now.
So in thirty days, we'll be zero.
No.
If we don't do it.
No.
Okay, uh, that's, that's what I'm asking is, you know, we got one, one, two, and how long does that last?
Well, we have. Probably a couple. A couple hundred thousand, I mean, I would say maybe another seven hundred fifty thousand, if not more.
Okay.
Of current projects that are going on right now, they're going to be requesting within thirty days, now. If you approve this tonight, we still have to do the resolution, the closing. And then get the money, which, or the availability of the money, and that will happen until the first week of December.
Okay.
So, yeah. As we were at your work comes that first week or second.
I know, I'm just trying to get a feel because, you know, this is kind of how it left field up to this point, you know. Um, no rumor of it, nothing coming down the pipe that we're digging into a lot more of our reserves. Because of the government being slow paid, um, because we've always said, we got the money, which is, which is great, I mean. And I know we do, it was just not explained in people call, I want to have a good answer. I would, you know, be able to look at it and say, yep, this is what's going on, I know about it, you know, that's the only thing is, this kind of popped up out of nowhere. I mean, how long would we know we were going to be short?
Well, I mean, the government shutdown's been for, we have three days now, then, I mean, um. But again. It's hard to anticipate how long it's going to take for reimbursement, you expect it within thirty days after you submit the, um. Stuff to whatever agency it is, you know, again, we didn't anticipate waiting ninety days for over eight hundred thousand dollars.
I understand.
So, I mean, if you can anticipate it, but I mean, we didn't anticipate it to be this long.
Yeah, understood, I'm just, you know, just, even just kind of like, okay, this isn't.
Yes, sir, I mean, again, if we would have known that all these things, these projects were coming to fruition at one time. And then having to float money more than we actually thought it was going to be, you know, not being reimbursed.
Okay.
You know, we would have never. Well, I mean, the problem is when you enter to a contract, you have to.
Have that extended days, I understand that part, you know, I mean, it was just the perfect storm that all collided at once.
Yes, sir.
Um, we were talking about this nine months, so we had a little talk about hiring somebody else down front, because we saw all this coming. Um, you know, I just, when it came on the agenda, I was just kind of caught off guard on it, and because. I've been preaching to everybody that, oh, yeah, no problem, we get, yeah, we're looking around at other municipalities, all struggling, and we're doing well. And then get hit with this, and I'm like, okay, so.
I mean.
As long as this is all reimbursables.
It's, I did, it's, it's part of, part of. Well, it, it, so listen, it's a little different than we traditionally done business, but we also never done. This is my five large projects, I've sometimes never had to carry all the, the grant costs, uh, on. On ourselves, um, but I still think that the time is right, we'll never do. If what I think is going to happen in Tallahassee happens in Tallahassee, we'll never have this opportunity again. We'll never have Second Avenue left the way it looks like right now, which is something that was originally going to cost two million, now it's five million.
No, I.
I'd love to avoid it, but I think it's a necessary tool at this judge. Yeah, we have, I mean, currently the project list that we have is six point, or sixteen point four million dollars, um, and. Our outlay is going to be, oh, three point eight four million dollars.
Yeah.
And for projects that we've never been able to afford unless we apply for these grants, apply for the state appropriations. Again, it's just all coming in at one time, which was never anticipated.
I'm not questioning applying for grants and going that route, that's the only route we have with the size of our, with the size of our town, so. No, I'm not pushing you that, it's just, you know, hit me by surprise, um, and I know I'm going to get more calls this week. Um, as this thing moves forward, so.
They're more happy to give me a call, I'll be more happy to do something.
No worries.
So with all that being said, and the C R hopefully getting signed in next day or two, that's going to take us out till January, it is, you know. With the potential another federal government shutdown in January timeframe is two million, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, so you've done the cash flow projections, and if we have another federal government shutdown, you can carry it through with the two million.
Yes, because the reason why is because we've already notified all our directors that any unnecessary spending, we stop. Uh, one example is for the north face design, you know, that's six hundred forty-five thousand dollars. We can tell them when to start it and still make our time, I mean, and in that timeframe, no matter if the government shut down. You know, we'll still try to get that money coming in, but we'll get our ad warm in, we'll get our ancillary taxes in. Enough to cover whatever our obligation is to the vendors with that thirty days, um, in addition to like salaries. All the other stuff that we simply see on a monthly basis.
Yeah, the reason I ask is, you know, we applied for a two million life break for life in better term. Yeah, the reason I ask is, you know, we applied for a two million, like, for like a better term, um, you know, is, should we apply for five? I mean, we're only paying interest on the part amount.
Right.
I mean, is, is two right?
I don't know if we have any options available without, uh, referendum, right? Well, we were trying to standardize the twelve and a half percent, um, that the charter requires, requires. Typically, our budget's around maybe nine million dollars, so that twelve and a half percent, best underneath that amount. Um, but I think if we needed any more, then we would come to you, but this is, gives us the access to those ones. Because we had to get approval from J P Morgan and, or a bunch of work, in order for us to even get approved for the two million, um, with a short timeframe than we have.
Okay.
I think our, I think our tack is to proceed cautiously, or then concern me for this point, uh. Yeah. Okay. Any additional comments? Alright, looking for a motion, do we need a motion to approve Rice or the, um, King? Yes, sir, and I do wanna thank Terran Theresa, they worked very hard on this, as we've been doing it in audits, this is priority. We checked with our auditors to make sure that this was something that was a, uh, industry standard and lo and behold, it is. There's a lot of different, uh, counties, municipalities, uh, school boards that do the same thing to make sure that the projects will keep on going. Uh, even when that flowed the common money and we're fit reimburses. Yeah, one of those unintended, uh, consequences with our, way our charter is set up, it doesn't allow us. Most people just have that as a matter of business and, um, but again. We don't, so it is a little foreign, but that is stated with real, in this church. Uh, council, you for a motion to, for motion to approve the motion to, council person, is that, is second, council person Williams. Begin voting with the council person.
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
You can listen, please, and, and you brought up for the report, so. That, we, we are very busy with the business tonight. Uh, in, I'm. Chairman, my appreciation of all those who serve, um, as part of the nation, and everyone for attending the evening. Ceremony we had this morning, well, with that, I think, uh. I, I think what we heard was valuable and the sermon was good, our, my sort of, um. One of the takeaways that I heard this morning is that one percent of the. President Obama, twenty-four million people, less than one percent, four million people, uh, who served for the world to remain alive today. Um, so we're quickly passing the time and we will have. People and historians who were there, uh, able to share their stories, so. Much, much respect and appreciation and thank you all for attending. Um, any additional, uh, council liaison report for the good of the work?
Oh, yeah. Um, so we had the, uh, Central Federal Land Owe, we did municipal advisory council meeting, uh, last Thursday, there they presented the updated, uh, twenty fifty Metropolitan Transportation Plan. They also presented, Captain, uh, presented the, uh, their tentative five year work program. And Florida Turf Light Interpol is, uh, presented their tentative fights and work programs as well. All of those are out online, if you guys have a pick of what's happening around the region, or saw road construction, um, though, though, uh. Even the tent is still gonna happen, there's gonna be a lot of construction, so it's, yeah, anytime soon, so, a lot of work to be done. Uh, specifically, fifty Metro, uh, transportation by any of the people.
Any additional reports, council? Seeing that.
Just a, the long way we're playing, no, it's just, nothing really. Frank Cranes, uh, left as, as the chairperson of the board and took over as chairperson of Longways Planning. We started coming up right away, but anybody who ever has a long ways playing, he, he, in service, since we need at least one more member, so. Which we look at. It's a low key group. The hall of hands here, anyway, there's James here and so, yeah, I think, Rob John, they're all engineers, yeah, they're all, we're all.
Yeah. Great, uh, yeah, and, and, uh, I, I'd be remiss if not to thank Frank, uh, for his, uh. His efforts and working putting together the ceremony today, that's, uh, that's his passion, which really ought to get better here. Um, staff reports, Robert?
No, sir.
Yeah, we, sorry, talking about, we're mainly horrible, it's the defense cut off.
Yes, sir.
Connie?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you for, um, I noticed that all the pressure cleaning out front looks fantastic. Uh. Retro appreciation for all the roadway work that I know went in, uh, when we had this, like, the last vestige of summer thunderstorms.
Torrential downpours, yes.
Counselor.
Yes, sir.
Third, Kirkalter.
Oh, sure.
Right, there's nothing else for the good of the order, we will enter in seven thirty-five.
Oh, because, uh, there are gonna be a, uh, conference workshop, uh, Thanksgiving, so.
Now, love it.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not gonna be, we're gonna have an ordinance.
We're not special.
Yeah, yeah. Say, Robert? No, we're. I talked to the powers that be for, uh, J P Morgan and for the F L C alone, uh, we believe that we can. We believe that we can, uh, have that meeting on the eighteenth, if you are available. And what we can do is, that meeting will probably be tops fifteen minutes for that section. But what I can do is add on to that, kind of a workshop kind of feel to it, for us to get direction on what you would like to see out of the restrooms. So we can get clear direction to Mr. Price. Because we don't, we don't dare be.
And we may also need a medium too.
Yeah, way better, right?
The eighteen is fine, I mean, but six fifteen would be better, just to give me enough time, because I'll be coming back from Winter Park, I have a meeting there at four. And it'll last probably power, I haven't backed it up, so we can start at six fifteen, that would, I'm not late for that first part.
Oh, okay, we can do that.
We should start on the, we started building versus the, we started six, we started six. We'll just hold the votes, we'll get here.
We'll, we'll wait for you to vote on your.
I can predict that.
And, you're, alright. That's for, everybody clear? We will then adjourn our meeting at seven thirty-seven. Thank, uh, thank everyone for, thank.